Mr. President.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here. A bunch of legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Okay, our first item tonight is a public hearing on the 2022 Peters Township operating budget and capital improvement. Mr. Lauer?
Yes, before we begin, we have received an email from Lucy and Bill Schoeff that I'd like to incorporate into the record of tonight's public hearing. Each year, council and the township staff invest considerable time and effort in developing a budget that judiciously allocates limited financial resources in a manner designed to best meet the needs and desires of the community. The budget process is defined and guided by the Peters Township Home Rule Charter. It reflects long-term planning initiatives such as the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and the Comprehensive Recreation Plan. It draws input from standing advisory boards, township staff, and residents, but more importantly, it contains the insight and contributions of the Peters Township Council, which are expressed not only at budget workshops, but throughout the year. The nature of municipal budgeting in most years is that it's an incremental process that reflects only modest changes in the scope and scale of municipal operations. Occasionally, the process of budgeting results in a municipal budget that is potentially transformative. The proposed 2020 Peters Township budget may be just such a budget. The 2020 budget.
2022.
To budget, excuse me.
I think we already passed that one.
Yeah.
Hope you have.
Um, budget contains an ambitious capital improvement plan. Expenditures for capital projects accounts for $19,596,000 and accounts for 49% of all expenditures. Several of the projects, such as road repaving and vehicle purchases, are repetitive annual capital projects. In addition, the proposed budget appropriates funds for five significant capital improvement initiatives. Under the American Rescue Plan Act, every municipality will receive grant funds. Peters Township is the recipient of $2,307,368, half of which the township has already received. The remaining funds will be transferred to the township in June of 2020.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. I have a problem with that, I guess. Non-entitled municipalities such as Peters Township are restricted to spending these funds in one of four ways: responding to the COVID-19 emergency, providing premium pay to eligible workers, replacing lost revenues, or making necessary investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. In 2022, Peters Township intends to appropriate $790,000 for infrastructure projects. Of this amount, $620,000 is allocated to storm sewer system improvements, and the remaining $170,000 is earmarked for the installation of a wireless network that will service all township facilities. The wireless network will provide the supporting framework needed to implement a voice-over-internet protocol phone solution for the township. Peters Township Council is committed to bringing public roads, previously recognized as minimum maintenance roads, up to township standards. In 2021, the township engaged the services of an engineering firm to develop drawings and specifications to facilitate improvements to Laurel and Maplewood Drives. The 2022 budget includes an appropriation sufficient to construct this project. In addition, funds are allocated for engineering services to undertake improvements to Longview Drive in 2023. These projects will not diminish the scale of the township's annual road program, but will be done in addition to our annual road improvement program. The design of a fire substation is nearing completion. The fire substation, which will be located at 435 Bevoutte Road, is intended to serve the southeast portion of the township. The station will be staffed by volunteers as well as career firefighters. Eventually, there will be two career firefighters working at the station 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and this will eventually result in a salary cost of approximately $750,000 annually. The township intends to gradually move in this direction and to take advantage of federal funding to assist in the transition. The 2021 budget include included an appropriation for the design and construction of the Aquatics Center at Rolling Hills Park. When bids were opened for this project in May of 2021, the proposed construction costs exceeded the amount appropriated for this project. Council authorized a redesign of the project that was intended to maintain most programming features while bringing the project in line with the budget. The project has been redesigned and is ready to go out to bid. If construction starts in early 2022, the Aquatics Center will open Memorial Day 2023. The township is seeking a significant grant funding to offset construction costs. A decision on these grant applications is anticipated before the end of the year. While the budget provides funding for both the fire station and the Aquatics Center, it is not possible to undertake both of these projects simultaneously. Early in the year, council will need to decide if either of these projects will be constructed in 2022. As the country emerges from the pandemic, the national labor market has faced a variety of challenges. As an employer, Peters Township has not been immune from these impacts. It has proven difficult to retain and attract applicants for certain part-time positions. As a result, the township increased its starting wages for these positions to mirror that which is being paid by local employers. In 2022, the first phase of the Rolling Hill Park will be complete, and Peters and the Peters Township Public Works Department will assume responsibility for the maintenance of an additional 90 acres of parkland. In recognition of this added burden, the 2022 budget provides funding for one additional full-time employee and two part-time employees in the Public Works Department. Additionally, the township will be suspending its participation in the joint municipal paving program for 2022. This will result in a savings of over 1,000 man-hours. The planning director and the township's building inspector have indicated that they intend to retire in 2023. In 2021, we struggled hiring a certified building inspector to replace a building inspector who resigned, and as a result, the township incurred significant expense in hiring a third-party service. The 2022 budget includes funds for a mid-year hiring of a building inspector. In 2021, Peters Township Council authorized the police department to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Pennsylvania State Police for the purpose of participating in Municipal Automobile Theft and Motor Vehicle Insurance Fraud Task Force. As a result, the township will be transitioning an officer from part-time to full-time status. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania will be reimbursing the township for the full cost of the officer. Finally, the budget provides funding for an additional assistant township manager position. This position is being created to increase the township's capacity to address human resource issues as well as project management. Creating this position will also facilitate a smooth transition upon the eventual retirement of the township manager. In 2022, the township estimates that revenues will equal $7,843,000, of which 35% of the -- excuse me. In 2022. One second. It is estimated that 65% of township's total revenues, $22,162,000, will be derived from taxes. The township anticipates collecting $14,319,000 in tax revenues. Of the taxes levied, the earned income tax and the real estate tax are the most significant. The budget to receipt for the real estate tax assumes a property tax millage of 1.7 mils, which is an increase of .78 mils over the 1.622-milage rate levied in 2021. The increase is intended to partially offset the increased debt service associated with the 2019 -- the 2019 bond issue. In 2022, real estate taxes will account for $5,520,000, or 39% of all taxes collected. In 2022, township estimates that revenues from non-tax sources will equal $7,843,072, which is 35% of the total revenue collected. Charges for services equal $3,368,000, or 43% of all non-tax revenues. In 2022, the fee for the collection and disposal of solid waste and recyclables will be increased by $1 per month per home. Well, the chart of accounts promulgated by the Pennsylvania Department of Community Economic Development, municipalities are encouraged to group expenditures into one of four categories. These program categories are general government, protections to persons and property, public works, and culture and recreation. In addition to these four program areas, the budget includes expenses related to debt service, insurance, and employee benefits. The total budget expenses for 2022 are $39,874,643. And if you look at the chart, what you see is what is typical of municipalities. The majority of those funds are associated with expenditures for public safety and public works. In the case of both park and rec and public safety, those numbers are inflated in 2022 as a result of large capital expenditures, so.
Paul, I need to draw attention to the fact that I'm not certain exactly what you said, but the text of your published document shows .78 mils as the increase. It's actually .078.
Yes, you're right.
And if the text that was taken and transcribed improperly states that, it needs to be corrected.
Yeah, the bottom line is what the millage will be is 1.7 mils. Thanks, Derek.
But we know how numbers have been.
Yes.
Instantly improperly related.
I don't know whether anyone has questions or any comments from the audience.
Would you like to give a little bit of an explanation about the $170,000 for the technology upgrades in the municipal buildings, just so people understand what that's supposed to be doing?
Yes, so again, this will be financed with money that has been provided under the American Rescue Plan, but what it's going to do in this building, as well as the library, police station, fire station, and public works garage, and the recreation center, is to enhance the wireless service that is available in those buildings. In addition to providing access not only for employees but for visitors, it will serve as the backbone upon which the new phone system will exist, which is a voice-over-internet system.
Thank you.
Oh, is the 39 million, that includes, or that would include if we did every project that's proposed in the budget?
Well, and I think what you're bringing up is a very important point.
That's why I brought it up.
Yes, because, you know.
I don't want to think what I'm thinking, we were spending 40 million and only bringing in 20.
Well, no, well, and that difference is largely these large capital projects being funded by borrowing funds. It is my belief that it doesn't make sense to attempt to do both of these large projects, the fire station and the Aquatics Center, in the same year. So the budget has been put together in such a way that it has the flexibility to allow council, if council chooses to move ahead with both projects, but it's going to be my recommendation that, depending upon the availability of particularly grant funding, that we move ahead with one or the other project.
Related to the grant funding, you had expected to have an answer about funding for the proposed Aquatics Center, because it's still proposed.
Mm-hmm.
Have we received any kind of information related to that?
You know, what I would have thought is that by the end of this month, that we would know one way or the other whether the grant under the capital budget, whether we had received it or not. The capital budget for the state of Pennsylvania has, would normally have been issued months ago, but in, at the end of October, they opened it up to add additional projects, which led everyone to believe that there was one or two projects that the, that the state wanted to see funded, and that shortly thereafter, we would have heard. But that's why I'm saying, I think we should know this by the end of the year, but there's no guarantee of that.
One other question on the Aquatics Center. On your summary of capital, you have that listed as $8 million, whereas the last number we heard was 10. Is there something that's happened?
This, no, that is simply our belief that if we were to, in fact, begin construction in March or April, that we would not complete the project next year, but it would run over until the following year.
So it's not reflective of the total price, just what we would expend during 2022?
Yes, but what is shown in its totality is the amount of money that would need to be borrowed to be able to make that happen.
But to Frank's point, it is important to understand that deficit isn't a deficit. It's not a black hole. It's funded by bond and other sorts of funding outside our revenue. In all senses and purposes, our revenue and expenditures, sans capital, is balanced.
Yes.
But in the event we would not go for the bond issue in the amount you may recommend, is it feasible that not doing that would eliminate the need to have any type of a tax increase?
This year? No, I don't think that's true, because, you know, in 2019, when we borrowed the funds to undertake the first part of this, one of the things that I expressed to council at that point in time was that that's, that that needs to be funded. And we've been able to, over the last couple of years, because of a variety of fortuitous things, to avoid that, but I think the time has come that we need to make sure that we adequately fund that debt service. So I think it would be required anyhow. What, if you don't borrow these funds, what you may avoid in some time in the future is an additional tax increase, because again, if we borrow funds to construct either the fire station or the pool, that debt is going to have to be funded. It's one of the reasons why the township maintains its bond rating is that, to council's credit, they recognize that, in fact, it's important, just like if you were borrowing money for a mortgage on a house, it's important to have the income that needed to be able to pay that debt service.
And I appreciate your explanation, thank you. I think what's, the reason I'm asking is that even when we were talking about the budget and doing the workshops, from that point till now, there have been increases in inflation and costs of things, and people are realizing that their money's not going as far. So I'm asking the question on behalf of the residents who, you know, really don't want to pay anything more if they don't have to, so.
How much will the millage increase? What was it, Mr. Lewis?
.078.
Yeah.
How much does that generate? I know one mil, what is, 300 and some thousand?
One mil is 300 and some thousand. The debt service payment increase was 330,000. So this is less than what it, what that increase was in debt, you know, in expenditures.
So to an average household?
You're, you're looking to, and again, it's always, in Peters, it's always challenging when you say average house, because the range is so, so big, but, you know, to the average house, this is probably $25 a year.
That's correct.
When you say average house, like a couple hundred?
330.
Yeah, 300, a 330,000-dollar house would be.
Assess value.
25 a year.
And earlier in the week, I shared with council, I believe, staff, a graphic with regard to current status of bond issued rates, and probably in my 50 years, I don't know that they've ever been as low as they are today. And given the current ignited inflation that's out there, an opportunity like this to seize available capital for improvements in this community, I don't think will ever occur at the same opportunity that exists today.
So, I mean, plus right now, the supply and demand on municipals is at all-time level levels as well. The spread between munis and treasuries is very narrow.
Audience comment?
Hello, Ron Books, 855 Bevoutte Road. I remembered, Jim. I'm standing here tonight, having not gone through and comprehensively reviewed the proposed budget, but I have certain feelings about expenditures. Now, as far as the capital expenditure bill is concerned, I think I've got to come down squarely on the side of the fire department as opposed to the pool, realizing, as Mr. Lauer has said, we can't do two at the same time. So I would say, do the fire department. I think lives are much more important than pool parties, so consider that. Second thing is, any increase in taxes, regardless of how small, contributes to inflation. I can tell you right now that we are going to go through an inflationary cycle that we have not seen for years, and that's going to drain virtually everybody's back pocket of some amount of money. Others will be able to afford it, a lot of people won't. I would suggest that more now than any time in the past that I can remember, that the township take a comprehensive look at expenditures in all areas. I have always been a, an adherent to efficiency. The more efficient you are, the less costly it is to operate. I would strongly suggest that we review every department in township government to see if we can't make some, some cuts, some, what I would call conservative movements toward maintaining a budget within limits. But it's a time to be concerned. You know, we have yet to see the end of COVID-19. That's not gone away, even though we were told that by July the 4th, it would be something in history. But I would say, at this point, be very, very careful, because anything is liable to happen, and I would prefer to see us in a good financial position if we had to deal with emergency contingencies of any sort. So thank you.
I would note for the record, for the people that are watching this, that at the beginning of our budgeting process, we interview each of the departments, and each of the departments make a presentation of what their requirements are, but the first, the first questions that they answer are, what are your major cost reduction objectives? So, you know, we are very cognizant of reducing costs. Before we even begin to discuss spending money, we talk about how you're going to reduce money.
I didn't see those, or those in the budget report. Probably useful for the residents to see what the initiatives or the department heads are for cutting costs.
There's no downside to looking at process and trying to find ways to improve. I would have to agree with Mr. Books that, you know, efficiency is always what we strive for, and I think there are probably many departments who are doing a good job and other ones where perhaps we could see improvement. So I would, I would agree that, you know, with all the expenses that we know on a day-to-day basis, and having signed the checks for two years, I see a lot of them, there's probably opportunity in different things.
And every little bit helps, is basically it.
Okay, other statements, questions? I had another question. I had a couple more questions for you, Mr. Lauer. On the, on the capital improvement program, and maybe it's just me, but there's a section under about protection of persons and property, and it talks about the pumper replacement, the fire station, the bay doors, blah, 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 blah. And it says total protection of persons and property, says 4.22 million, but when I add up the numbers that are on that column, it's more, and can you explain that? Is that because some of it's not going to be included in the budget?
The pumper expense didn't add up in the Excel column. The pumper expense is just not included on that. It should be that additional 500,000. 4.72 million?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's listed there, it's just not, the Excel, the Excel spreadsheet didn't.
I'm looking at the number, and it's a lot lower.
But it is in the budget as it's prepared, like I'm telling you.
Does that add 500,000 to the 18,780,000?
I don't think so.
No.
I don't know, I don't know that. But, you know, I mean, I think that what would be good, you know, we get to see that. I don't know if it's, if it's available, but, you know, you look at what you, you know, what, what is, what you're, you know, proposing to spend, and, you know, like, there's a, there's a section here that says Peters Lake Dam spillway, and, you know, it has $150,000. But in reality, I mean, that's maybe a three or four, five million dollar project.
Well, yes.
And, and then you're looking at, you know, you know, 5 million for all this fire stuff, and then you're looking at, you know, 10 or 12 million for whatever, for the aquatics facility, and then, you know, eventually, we're going to have to eat that $750,000 in fireman's salaries. I mean, you know, if you, if you look down the road, I mean, it would be probably better to, to provide some sort of, to the public, some sort of forecast for the next couple of years, because, you know, in reality, you add that up, that's a lot of money. And, you know, you look at this and say, well, you know, we can borrow whatever, 12 million, and the debt service is, you know, 300 grand a year, and, you know, but that just, that doesn't take into reality that, you know, there's going to be more, and more, and more, and more, and, you know, I'm not, I, I mean, this is the way that we've traditionally looked at the budget, and I do see those, we all see those advanced projections of what we think things are going to cost, but, and, and I understand that these things don't need to be done, they only get done if we all agree to get them, well, not all, but a majority of us agree to get it done. So, I mean, I'm just concerned that, you know, there's a lot on our plate. I mean, I can't think of a, a time, and I've been on council quite a while, where there's been so much money, like, in the, in the pipeline, and so, I mean, and if the costs keep coming up the way they are, we're going to get less bang for our buck on the paving, repaving program, so that's going to be a bigger part of the budget, and, you know, I just, I think that, that what you've done is a fine job. I just think that, you know, everyone should be cognizant of the fact going forward that if we do pass this budget, that, you know, when it comes time to make these decisions, that we try to keep that in perspective, that, you know, it's not just this, it's the millions that aren't on here that's, that are coming down the, the pipe, and I think that we owe that, as elected officials, to, you know, our residents. And, and I just, you know, want to make it clear that, that we need to know that and keep the eye on the ball. It's not our money, it's their money, and, and, you know. I got two flat there, you guys. I got two flat there, you guys. When we did get to that point, those items become part of that year's budget.
Right, right. So just because we agree, you know, we have eighteen million or whatever, how the number is, doesn't mean that's all going to get spent.
No, no.
It just means, you know, we're going to do what we're going to do.
And that's what you're suggesting is, in effect, what we're doing, where we're pointing out that, hey, these things are in front of us.
Yeah.
And at some point, we're going to have to make a decision. Either we do those things, or not do those things, depending on what else is going on.
And when the final budget document is complete, what you see in terms of the capital improvement program is not only a look at next year, you have a look at a five-year period. And when you look at the descriptions of the, the capital improvement projects, one of the things that's included, particularly when you have something of a significant nature like the fire station, is its, its projected impact on future operating expenses, so that in fact, it's, you know, it's transparent, so you can understand completely what, what it is you're voting on when you vote to move ahead with that project, or, or choose not to move ahead with that project.
Well, to that point, Mr. Lauer, that was one thing that I kind of expected to see in the budget, and that would be, you put in the operating, the salary costs for the fire station, excuse me, at a potential seven hundred and fifty annually. The aquatic center, on the other hand, is also going to have a similar staffing component to it, which may not hit in two thousand twenty-two, depending on if it's approved and when the construction occurred. But that's another very important piece of information. Those costs include potentially a consulting company, additional staff for the staffing the aquatic center. So it would be helpful to know what that potentially is going to be, if in fact, this proposed aquatic center is given the green light to go forward.
Yes, and we're still working on that, but one of the significant differences is between something like a fire station and something like an aquatic center, is that the fire station will not generate any revenues, and...
I think saving lives is...
Well, no, I hear what you're saying, but, but on the other side, the aquatic center will generate revenues, which will offset, set those costs. One of the things we're trying to go back and look at is, you know, the initial, the initial information from Ballard King suggested that it would completely offset those. I don't know whether that, I've got to go back and take a look at that based upon the assumptions that were being made about, you know, the cost of staffing that. So, within the budget, when it's adopted, there will be at least some discussion about what the, what we perceive the impact to be of building the aquatic center on the operating costs.
Do you anticipate that'll be available for the workshop next Monday?
I don't know that. I've got, you know, we have three workdays between now and then, and so I don't know whether that's possible.
They've been working on this for months. We sent that back to Kimmel Bogret a while ago, so I'm surprised.
I don't care if it doesn't come in right away, because I think it would give them more time to maybe take a look at what all this inflation is going to have, the numbers that they had drafted probably two months ago.
Well, and that's, you're right, you're justified in that, that things have changed now, since maybe they started looking at it. This will be like, maybe their third iteration. Okay, we'll buy that.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Discussion in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is closed.
Does the speaker have a copy of our handout?
She does not.
I think she does.
I was going to say, there were extractions.
She has one.
Okay. The next item of business is approval of the minutes from the November eighth meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any special reports?
I just wanted to bring to council's attention a couple of the initiatives that have occurred over the last few weeks. You know, one of the things that makes our library a bit different than others is its programming in addition to its collection. A couple of weeks ago, the library once again sponsored Novel November. It attracted about three hundred and fifty people to a presentation at the, at the high school. It is underwritten by the, the Library Foundation and its staff, by their volunteers, as well as the library staff and volunteers for the library. And like I said, it was good to be able to see the library back doing live programming. Along those same kind of lines, they had the, they have a miniature golf course that they installed temporarily inside the library for a day of golf, and they attracted about a hundred and fifty families who came in to golf on a, on a Saturday. So, like I said, it's good to be able to see that there's programming occurring there again as well. Yesterday, the fire department, in conjunction with Hilltop Pharmacy, did a vaccine clinic. Hundred and twenty-seven children got their first dose of COVID vaccine, three hundred and ninety-three people received vaccinations, and they were vaccinating, doing not only initial vaccinations and boosters, they were also doing flu shots. And this was hosted at the old middle school with a corporation from the, from the school district.
There was also, what, a week or so ago, a clinic for, I guess I would say, seniors that were conducted at the Fire Hall vaccination program?
That I'm not familiar with. One of the things we did was, Hilltop Pharmacy helped us with, with vaccinations or boosters for all the township employees, and so...
But it was Hilltop again, it was at the Fire Hall, and I think there were several hundred residents that were up there.
In addition to the ones you mentioned.
Audience comments? Anybody in the audience that has a comment on a non-agenda item? We've got five minutes. Seeing any papers? Move along. Unfinished business, we have none. New business? First item is the ordinance amending the twenty twenty-one Peter Township budget.
Yeah, we went through this in great detail at the last meeting. It's unchanged from that. It's, it's the annual effort to adjust the operating budgets to be appropriations where there are significant departures from the approved budget plan. So it's going to be my recommendation. Council approved ordinance eight seventy-one, amending the twenty twenty-one Peter Township operating budget.
So moved. Selective discussion in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approval of the Brookwood Place Amendment Number Four, shown in drawings prepared by Spirit Land Surveying, dated September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one for the Donegal Partners LLC.
So, this is, council's now done this, I think this will be the, the fourth time that the council has done this, where you're amending the plan to account for the fact that they have now determined where the party walls are between the townhouse structure. So this, all it's doing is, is making note of that.
Moved, we approve the Brookwood Place Amendment Number Four, shown on drawings prepared by Serpitude Land Surveying, dated September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one for Donegal Partners LLC.
Second. Discussion in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approval for recording purposes of the CAGNY Plan Number Three, is shown in drawings prepared by Harshman C. Group, dated September ninth, two thousand twenty-one for the Joseph McLaughlin Plan.
So, the McLaughlin and the CAGNY families are requesting the township's approval of the CAGNY Plan Number Three final plan. This sub survives parcel A and parcel B in the CAGNY Plan One, as recorded nineteen eighty. You can see, this is along Route nineteen, right above where Mr. Robinson has his storage facility there. In your docket is a copy of what this final subdivision looks like. This is what the parcels look like right now. It's, there's a roadway that goes up there, and there is actually one parcel on the left-hand side of that roadway, and a parcel on the right-hand side of the roadway. When the subdivision is done, it will be divided into two parcels that, that look like this. The one thing that I would note, that the plan does have a condition on it that requires that, because both of these properties have access to Route nineteen, that if in fact both of the properties attempt to, to access nineteen, that it be done with a shared driveway. I think as a practical matter, that's not what's going to happen, but I think it's worth noting.
What's this, is it a commercial?
Yes.
Are there commercial buildings on there now?
Totally vacant.
Yeah. It's, it's that hillside.
On the left?
Yep.
All right, I'll move that we approve for recording purposes the CAGNY Plan Number Three, as shown on drawings prepared by Harshman Group C. E., dated September ninth, two thousand twenty-one for Joseph McLaughlin.
I'll second. Discussion?
Just another question, is CAGNY drive a public or a private road?
A private road.
So that's another one?
Yes.
Another private road. And then, can this be subdivided again if they choose to do so? I didn't read that it couldn't be.
Oh, I think it can be.
Okay, so that wasn't a condition?
Correct.
Could it be if it's maintained as a private road? I don't believe so.
Well, you can't subdivide and create new lots onto a private road, but if someone wanted to come in and develop it and create an out parcel for a commercial, then yes, it possibly could be further subdivided.
But they can't add a road onto Washington Road.
They could only share access to nineteen, these two parcels.
So it would have to go onto CAGNY.
It could go onto CAGNY, it could be a separate, there's no plans at this time to develop this acreage. That's a, that's a difficult location to come out on Route nineteen where CAGNY comes out.
I know, I know. I'm just asking for clarification, because in one hand, it sounds like there's not an opportunity to subdivide, because there can't be another driveway onto Washington. So it would have to go to CAGNY, and that's why I asked.
Oh, no, that is not what the condition says. What the condition says is that if a driveway comes out onto Route nineteen, that there only be one driveway that would be shared by the two, two lots. In fact, I, I think the bigger challenge is going to be, is getting a highway occupancy permit from Penn Point to be able to do anything with regard to...
Can you back the prior, the overhead picture? So, it can't connect anywhere down there where Robinson's property is?
No.
There's poor access, that's on that ramp down.
Is that what that is?
Yeah.
Okay. What's happened to the water course that comes down the west side of nineteen? Is it traversed underneath nineteen?
Yes, further north, it comes in further north of this parcel.
It's still there, right? You have a little grate there? Pizzazz Pizza, there's a...
It crosses over, it crosses under nineteen, further north.
I'm trying to think of where that happened.
This is beside Queen of Heaven Cemetery.
Correct.
Isn't that next property north?
Correct.
It's Queen of Heaven. I'm not against this, I just wanted to be clear as to what potentially can be done in the future.
Correct.
So that's all I was trying to clarify.
Motion in a second. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next item is approval of Forest Lawn Gardens, South Hills Honda subdivision revised as shown in drawings prepared by Plaidus Engineering Surveying, dated October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one for Norton Real Estate and Forest Lawn Gardens.
So this is a simple subdivision that is transferring that small tract of land shown in blue in an attempt to straighten out a property line. So it's going to be my recommendation that council approve the Forest Lawn, South Hills subdivision.
Second.
They're not buying that little bit, or they're just cleaning up the line?
I don't know whether there's money being transferred or not, I don't know.
We are not aware of that.
We're not. Well, I mean, I vaguely recollect years ago, I was looking up, somebody wanted to buy some land from a cemetery, and there, you had to get some sort of approval, like Orpheus Corner Group or something like that, and I didn't see...
Yeah, but I think that's only if that, if the land was open for burial purposes. So, because I'm not sure whether that part of the cemetery ever was open.
Well, I'm sure there's, they're not, there's nothing.
Well, yeah, no, obviously. No, I mean, if the portion...
You park your car there, man. Okay, you have a motion in a second?
Yep.
Can we get a motion in there?
Yes.
Yes.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution of amending Peter's Township Act five thirty-seven Sewerage Facility Plan to provide access to sewer services for Rebel Two plant of lots.
So, these next two items are related. This is a piece of property located at the intersection of Churchill and Turkeyfoot Road that they're looking to subdivide and, for the purpose of building a couple homes. So to be able to get sewerage to this site, it requires an amendment to the Township's Act five thirty-seven plan to provide access to sewers. So it's my recommendation that Peter Township Council adopt Resolution eleven three twenty-one, amending the, the Peter Township Act five thirty-seven plan to provide access to the Rebel Two plant of lots.
So moved.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So, this is a simple subdivision that's creating two lots, the only, the only condition that is beyond what you would normally see is that there is a condition that requires that there be a shared access to these two lots, and that it be opposite Sage Woods Drive, to so as to create a plus intersection. But as you can see, the bulk of the conditions that were set have been already fulfilled. There are two remaining ones, approval from Peter's Creek Sanitary Authority and the D E P Planning Modules, which is what you took action on previously. So, it's my recommendation that Peter Township approve the Rebel Plant of Lots Number Two, as shown on the drawing from Plaidus Engineering Surveying.
Subject to the conditions.
Second.
Discussion in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Resolution accepting of stormwater management facility location for open space labeled parcel two in the Whispering Pines Plan.
The engineer, Gateway Engineers, along with Mr. Azamitis, has completed an inspection of the stormwater facility. It's located in open space parcel two in the Whispering Pines Plan, and they recommend acceptance. In addition, the Washington County Conservation District has completed an inspection and has issued a notice of termination for the M P D S permit that was, they issued for the development of Whispering Pines Plan. So it's my recommendation that Peter Township Council adopt Resolution eleven four twenty-one, accepting the stormwater manager facility located on the open space parcel number two.
So moved.
Other discussion?
I do have two questions. When we accept these stormwater ponds, and you say that Gateway inspected them, does that mean that we will not be on the hook for getting them updated, or cleaned, or maintained for several years?
That would be true. What, what we're doing is expecting to make sure that they've been cleaned out, so that they, they are as designed. Eventually, they will fill in, and eventually, we will be, be maintaining them, but you're right, that'll be a while, a ways down the road.
Thank you for that. One other question. A while back, I had asked about open issues in this particular plan, particularly, there's some sidewalks that weren't installed. My question is, is this plan now complete? You know, we're accepting this pond, is there still, are there still outstanding things? I haven't been over there, so I don't know.
There's still a section of sidewalk that needs to be completed, and we are still holding...
Escrow money.
Escrow money for that.
Is this retention pond fenced or something?
No, it's, it's a dry pond, like, the bulk of the ponds we own.
Most of them aren't fenced, unless they have a detention warrant.
Discussion in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed. They're on build.
Mr. Chairman, payroll was paid on November 12th, was 393,000. Con's payable with the new checks tonight is about 512,000. The highest payment was to Waste Management, that's kind of an ongoing thing. There's also a credit card statement for just under 19,000. The bills appear to be in order, I move to approve.
So, second.
Discussion, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Correspondents, anything you need to discuss?
Yes, in your dockets, you have a email that was sent from the Environmental Quality Board in support of the Sharpshooter Program. I guess Mrs. Merrill, at the last meeting, asked how we are moving forward with that program or a decision on that, and I I guess my question to council is, what is the process by which you want to want to authorize that? I mean, we have made application, like we said we would, to be able to get the program approved by the state of Pennsylvania. I I don't know what council wants to do or needs to do to make a decision.
I think that's all we did is authorize a permit, I think it needs to come back to us.
But but my my question is, do you think a public hearing is necessary for that? What's that?
I think so.
I would suggest that we do that, the same as we did the hearing tonight, you know, do it before council meeting, just so people have an opportunity if they want to speak. I mean, I'll be honest with you, I asked the EQB whether they had been asked for an opinion, I think this is a normal thing that they would weigh in on, so I'm glad they responded. But, you know, I think other people may not really know that this is potentially out there, and they have opinions one way or the other.
Let us take the questions off the table.
Okay, so so let me do this, we have three weeks between meetings, I'll advise a public hearing for the next council meeting, we can take comments.
All righty, reports, anybody want to discuss any other reports?
I would point out in the Park and Rec report, that Mrs. that Ms. Harmel has met recently with the leadership of the various sports associations, for the purpose of thanking them and also soliciting input about their concerns. The other thing is, if you look at at her monthly report, she's now going to be including something that attempts to bring council up to date on what's happening with the sports associations. And I would note, we have a building inspector coming on September 13th.
That's good news. One thing about the library report, and I kind of look at this all the time, but if you look at the total number of physical circulation, the material circulated in Peters compared to the wagon overall circulation, Peters Township runs about 35% of the total circulation, which I think goes to show how much people utilize our library and enjoy the offerings that are there. So I think that's a significant statistic related to to the usage of the library in the county.
Agreed.
Okay, Ms. Lanier?
I wanted to bring to your attention that the Library Foundation will be funding a strategic plan for the library. This is an initiative that Ms. Love is very interested in pursuing, to provide direction for the library for the upcoming years. You know, the the township, of course, is an important source of all their funding, and not only will library board members and key employees need to be involved in that, but I think there needs to be representation from council, as well as the township's administrative staff, to make sure that we're headed all in the same direction, so.
Well, it's nice the foundation will fund that, it's a worthwhile endeavor.
Yes. There are a number of openings on advisory boards, we have started to solicit applications for these positions, we actually have some applications in already. We've got a workshop meeting next Monday, with and at that meeting will be the newly elected members of council for next year. My intention for the workshop meeting was to discuss major capital projects. One of the things that in sitting down and talking to the to the newly elected officials, they're very interested in understanding the rationale of various councilmen with regard to these issues. So we intend to have like a brief presentation, for instance, on the fire station by the fire chief, but quite honestly, I think what they're really interested in is knowing what you think about these projects, so so come prepared.
Could you back up one minute to the open board positions? It's noted that the Park and Rec board position that's open is a school appointment. Are people still sending information to Mr. Gromick, or is it going to, and then are you forwarding it to the school?
I guess it can go either way.
Okay, but then they'll hopefully maybe take some active action on that, so that you have somebody for the new year. Thank you.
Have they selected a replacement chairman?
I don't believe they have yet.
We would like to be able to schedule December 6th as a night for council to interview applicants for the Assistant Managers position. And then the last, the, I wanted to talk briefly about Mallard Lane. We have spoken about this, where, you know, they're interested in having that that street taken over, but there were, when we went out and examined the public improvements, particularly the storm sewers, there was a lot of work that needed to be done. Supposedly, they have spent $90,000 to do those improvements. Normally, what we would expect is that we would take over a right of way, and that the road would be in the right of way, and we would take over easements for the location of the storm sewers. That's become a challenge, because to do that would take recording new deeds for every home in that in that plan. In addition, it would take a sign off from all the mortgage holders. And so what we're proposing as an alternative, and we have one example of this in town, is to actually take a lease on this property, in essence, leasing the same area that we would have taken as a right of way, and maintaining it as as it would be a public street. And that includes not only annual winter maintenance, it includes maintaining the the road surface as well, as well as the storm sewers. I think it gets to the intention that we had when when we were working with the homeowners about taking this over. The only thing that from the township standpoint that you're going to forego is liquid fuels receipts on this road, but quite honestly, it is so short, you're talking about a minuscule amount of money in any one given year, and so I I don't think that really.
That's not relevant.
Becomes an issue, that is, it really is not relevant, so.
But who who owns the road now, Paul? Who's it titled at?
Each lot.
Each lot, each lot goes all the way up to Valleybrook?
Yes.
See, this would have been an important thing to know when this whole thing came up.
Well, that would cross.
Because that might be considered an interest.
Oh, yeah.
That's why we couldn't do a dedication or an easement.
Or you could do a condemnation. You just condemn it.
But wouldn't that trigger something with the mortgage holders still?
Well, we still would have to redo all their deeds, I suspect, because they would own the other side of the street. Now, they meet the minimum lot coverage, we thought maybe that's why they put their road in their deeds, but it's just a, it's not easy.
So where else do we have this situation?
You reference. We have one small section of road in Venetia Railroad Street, which we literally rent off of the railroad company and have for years. It's long before I got here.
But that's different than renting off of however many, 20 people.
Oh, no, I I'm just saying that, you know, in terms of using that as an instrument to own and maintain a road, and and trust me, Mallard Drive and Railroad Street will never be confused. Yeah, will never be confused, but but it's, you know, it's in essence, the same thing.
But the grass between Mallard and Valleybrook, is that common area there, or are they each responsible for?
Each.
They're each responsible for milling that, they're a little piece.
But as a practical matter, that's not how they maintain it.
Right.
And, you know, one of the things that, you know, we're in the process of trying to draft what that lease would look like, is that we would not assume any responsibility for any landscaping.
So they, we initially put in the lease a 25-year term with an automatic renewal. I didn't tell Paul, because I've been tied up today, but their council emailed me back, asked for 99 years, and she has to, we really have to record this?
I don't know how you.
I think you do have to record it.
Yeah, I mean, I insist on a recordation, because somebody needs to know, she's afraid we get into the same problem we have with the mortgage companies giving up a piece of their land, and that, from a year ago, we've told her that, Mark and I.
Why don't you, why don't you make it an irrevocable license? Because if you do that, then, because if you make it a lease, in theory, someday, somebody moves in there and doesn't want us maintaining that road, they in theory could try to terminate the lease.
We made everybody sign off as a lessor of it, I mean, they're.
It does advise, abiding on successors and.
We put it in the lease, and that's why we wanted to record it. But look, we only did this way because they really want the township to take it over, and we had some experience with railroad, that was.
But the other thing is, the way the lease is written is that no individual can revoke it, it can only be revoked by.
And I would encourage, if we go around, you guys need to look at it, because it is creative, I think it can be done.
I think the license would be done.
Say, that's what I think, because then it's permanent.
Well, I think we floated the license first. I I, we've gone through a couple renditions of.
But whatever it is, it has to be recorded.
But here's the other thing, don't the lenders all have to sign off on it anyway, right?
Well, no, that's where they balked at the dedication or right of way, because they said they'll never get the lenders.
And they believe.
I think they have to sign off on it anyway.
Well, that's what this email just, I think.
That's why she doesn't want to record it, the lawyer doesn't want to record it.
I just received it this morning.
Yeah.
You've got to protect us.
See, yeah, I don't, I don't see how, I mean, I think the lenders, even if it's a lease, lenders have to sign it, because you're.
Can all circulate it to council and just get your thoughts, because, I mean, I, what else are you going to call it?
Well, I mean, I don't, I think regardless of what you do, the lender's got to sign off, because whether it's a lease, a license, or whatever, you're still encumbering.
I I agree.
The surface, so.
No, I don't know, would that be true if someone leased their house? I mean, if if you're not living in your house and you lease your house, you don't necessarily have to tell.
But you're not creating a new right, what you're doing here is essentially.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, what you're doing here is essentially, you're putting an encumbrance on the title, because now you've leased a portion of the, when the bank lent the money, they're lending it to someone as a residence, they're not lending it with the idea that someday, someone's going to lease off a portion of it to somebody else.
A portion, is it?
Right. For a different purpose than residing there.
Well, the other things that's not in here is that if, in fact, it's not renewed, the road goes back to be in private, wouldn't that be a?
They, that's why they want a 99, I I just threw the terms in, because I wasn't sure what council would be going up that far, it would be amenable to see how that works.
But it needs to say what'll happen if it's not written, is what I'm trying to say.
But don't you think there'd be a marketability issue if we did a license or a lease, like to the next generation of buyers? Like, do you think a mortgage company would balk that you don't really?
Some of them would.
That's what I'm saying, it might be tougher for them to sell their.
Well, no, that's why we didn't go down another road, and obviously, that's why I got the email today and said, hey, do we really have to tell everybody?
And, well, and, you know, and one of their first things was, is not to not to do anything with the property rights and just send them into a maintenance agreement. I personally think that's a problem, because we have private roads all over town, and, you know, there are, there are half a dozen places where I think they would love us to enter into a maintenance agreement to maintain their.
They they all just need to refinance with one single lender who will agree to whatever we ask.
It's going to make this easy, I'm.
Right.
Well, the other thing, if this becomes a public road, if you can get through all this other stuff, then in theory, with the trail access, people could go park on that road, and they would have nothing to say about it.
We we do say it's a public road for all purposes, including.
Okay, I mean, do they understand that? Okay, they understand that, then?
Well, I mean. Oh, I don't think, I would like to say, I don't know that anybody's thought through that.
Well, the question, though, be kind, you, Mrs. Merrill's right, people could certainly park there, the question is whether they'd have the right to go across their property using access.
That trail access is private.
I think that's going to be a.
We, anyway, we've contemplated a lot of different scenarios of how to do this, because they they want it done yesterday, and they've been working on for quite.
Well, what they want is, you know, winter's coming, and they want to know how their snow's going to get removed. And I guess the question is, while we work through this, are we prepared to do snow removal on this road?
No.
We can't, because then we have to do every private road in the township.
I I wouldn't do it before the agreement's signed.
Let me ask you this question, then, if there is a license or a lease that they they are prepared to sign, are we prepared to sign it?
Well, I think we need to see it first. I mean, ultimately, if there's some language in there that indemnifies us, in case any of them ever have a problem with their lenders when they go to sell the their property, then I think I'm fine with it. I just don't want, at some point, one of those owners down there to be selling their house, and then they can't sell it because a bank won't lend money on it or something like that, then it comes back on us.
Right, the township can't be a party to the ownership of the house, or the property, whatever you want to call it.
Well, here, because let's say one of those houses goes up for foreclosure, you know, how does that get affected?
Yeah, we've kind of talked this out amongst ourselves here with council, this is why it's not done. I'll have to go back, Frank, I don't remember if we had indemnifying languages or anything. Is that one way that street?
No.
No.
What's our advantage in doing all this?
Well, the only advantage, there is no advantage per se, the only thing is that if in fact, they would have given us a right of way, we committed to taking over this over this road, and again.
They can't, I mean, that's.
And and they have been at our direction, they've invested considerable amount of money to repair deficiencies they had with their their storm sewer system.
They wouldn't have to do that anyway, though.
Uh, well, they would have had to do it at some point, they didn't have to do it now.
Well, what was the rationale when this plan was approved? What was the rationale for making this a private road in the first place? Was it just because of the width of the road?
It sounds good.
Well, I think that had to do a little bit with, it was, it was the developer's choice to go with a private road, so there wasn't a right of way.
So he could charge more for the property.
This, if this was, would have been a public road, they would have had to put that in a 50-foot right of way at that time, which would have pushed everything way back from where it is.
Which has been the case in most of these instances. Private road advantage, it was a, it's a potato.
And that's gone. If you do a private road now, it's inside of a, it's inside of a 50-foot right of way that is privately held.
I just haven't seen one where the front of the road is in the deeded piece of property, and their portion of the road is theirs, that's what they buy and sell.
Is there no HOA?
Yes, there is.
So what does the HOA maintain in the?
Well, they they maintain, I think, all of that, but I think they're maintaining people's private property.
Do they all have cross easements across each other's front yards?
I don't think so.
Well, there's a, the whole, the whole road's in an easement.
Right, so they each have a cross easement across.
I don't think they have separate one, but yeah, they can use it, but.
I don't see the advantage of us getting into, you know, a unique situation here that could be compromised in some of these other private roads.
Like, I don't have a problem, as long as we have a, personally, if we have some type of property interest in it, that's why I think a lease kind of makes sense.
What do we get out of it, if you're saying that the, you know, you're going to get the the state liquid fuels funds, which is minuscule, I mean, really, what do we get out of it except for the burden?
Well, that would have been true even if they were able to give you a right of way, and you would have taken it, as you told them.
We kind of went down a path, and they and they kind of fulfilled their obligation, which is upgrading the road, because we said we would take it over. Now, this stumble block is coming, we're trying to figure out the best way.
It's a unique problem.
So we can't tell them, on the one hand, go ahead and spend the money, and then later on, say, oh, no, we changed our mind, I don't think that's right. We're committed to taking it over somehow.
And I agree with you, Jim, Mr. Burquist, I agree with you, but I think, I'm not sure that council realized this stumbling block was going to happen, or maybe we would have stopped them, no, or we would have stopped them from spending all that money.
But they, the one thing that I will say, they were informed of this challenge along long time ago.
Right, they were.
Yes.
Not us.
Why don't you just circulate something, and we'll look, I guess.
Keep on working on it.
I think Mr. Lewis makes a good point, I think Mr. Burquist makes a good point as well.
The last thing I have under Ms. Lanias, just wanted to update you on this, we're making some progress with regard to a co-located cellular tower in Peterswood Park. It would be up against the, it would be up against the fence for Hoffbauer Field at this location. There would be a, another portion that would be a fenced-in area that would have the electronic equipment. What they're proposing is a pole that is, that is 90 feet tall, the current poles that are out there that are lighting Hoffbauer Field are 70 feet. The other thing about this is, it's carrying far more weight than what a, that light stand would be, so this is going to be a much heftier pole than what you see elsewhere there. It is designed to accommodate not only AT&amp;T, but an additional carrier if somebody else wanted to locate there. That fenced-in area would have a piece of equipment that looks like this. So.
Pretty much as expected.
Well, everyone's complaining, so.
Yeah, let's get it done.
One question though, Paul, is there a reason we put chain link fence around these things as opposed to like white vinyl fence, so you couldn't like see it?
One of my things going to be to them is that it can't look like this, and it certainly isn't going to have barbed wire at the top. You know, that's not happening inside the park. I think they, what they wanted, they, they're offering this, because I thought this was actually going to be in a building. This is, this is the type of module that they're now using to do these, and that's why he sent this, but he just wants to make sure that conceptually, where they're talking about doing this, that council's okay with it. So.
Is there anything else under Ms. Lanias?
I have two things.
Exemplifies the difficulty we have in finding other locations to begin to accommodate a condition that was very much opposed to when these towers originally started to grow up. This isn't going to do anything in my neighborhood.
No, probably not.
That's my next question, have we ever looked into Peters Lake, putting one over there, at the higher point?
This is the one that we're now working on, so, you know, I don't know that, I don't know that, you know, because what drives this isn't us, it's the carriers who drive this.
So people need to keep complaining to their carriers.
Yes.
There you go. Two things briefly, is there any update on the status of a manager for the tennis center? I understand that it's going to be closed over Thanksgiving, or that some of the hours are being modified. Do we have any, you mentioned a candidate, I just wanted.
We interviewed one candidate, he was not interested in the position. We had a second candidate that we attempted to interview, and he didn't show up for the interview. So what we're going to do is, you know, the thought in talking to the individual from the U.S. Tennis Association, is that we think that it might be good to pause for a couple weeks and then repost the job. What we're seeing is on the, on the U.S. TA site, is that there are lots of jobs just like this that are out there right now, so.
You know, again, I have to suggest that maybe we focus more on the ability to manage and market than being, and may know about tennis and not necessarily someone looking to make money as a tennis pro. I mean, you might have a better opportunity finding somebody, and then hire the pros that you need on a contract basis. Second thing, so the Christmas, Peters Christmas is different this year, there is no tree lighting, from what I understand, so.
Well, I understand too, and quite honestly, I only know that when I saw your, your request for information from Michelle.
Yes.
So I haven't had a chance to talk to Michelle yet to understand why we're not doing it here as opposed to doing it over the rec center, I don't know that yet.
So people need to check with the Park and Rec Department if they want to have their kids involved, it's a reservation process, similar to what they did in the other sort of programs, which is not a bad situation, but people need to be aware.
Yes.
Because otherwise, they might be thinking they're going to just come on down, and there won't be anything to come on down to, so. I was a little disappointed, I like to see the tree lit up. So, that's all I had, those two things.
Anything else on Ms. Lanias? Next agenda?
Just a happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Okay, being no other business, we do have an executive session, personnel items, so we are.